Pacifica Planning Commission, may we start with the roll call vote?
Recording in progress.
Commissioner Divine. Commissioner Divine.
Present.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Present.
Commissioner Godwin.
Present.
Chair Leal.
Present.
Commissioner Wright.
Present.
Commissioner Divine, will you lead us in the salute to flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and free to its justice as a rule.
All right, so now we'll move on to the administrative business on the agenda.
Recording in progress.
Before we start, are there any public comments on the items on administrative business? I don't have any cards, any dial-in and Zoom. If anyone participating remotely, you can press star nine to raise your hand if you'd like to speak on this agenda item.
There are no hands raised.
Okay, and now, so we'll move on to the approval of the order of the agenda. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Ferguson.
I move to approve the agenda as noted.
Commissioner Godwin.
I second the motion.
May we have a vote? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, next item is approval of minutes from the June 13, 2023 meeting. Any comments or motions for the minutes? Commissioner Divine.
A motion to approve.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Second.
Can we have a vote? That motion passes unanimously. All right, next we'll move on to the designation of the liaison to the city council meeting, which is scheduled for August 14, 2023, and this is the North Coast County Water District Headquarters Project Appeal. Any comments from staff on this item?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Planning Director Christian Murdock, good evening. I just want to point out, given the conflicts of interest that some of the commissioners had, we need to ensure that the liaison is one of the commissioners that was eligible to participate. Excuse me. And so that would include Commissioner Divine, Commissioner Godwin, or Commissioner Wright among the commissioners that are present this evening.
Okay, thank you. So do we have any volunteers? Don't everyone jump at once?
If nobody else will do it, I'd be happy to do it. Just for the record, though, I was the only no vote on that issue.
Any other volunteers? No? All right, I think Commissioner Wright, you're slotted for that meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you for volunteering. All right, moving along to oral communications. This portion of the agenda is open for the public to comment on any items that are not on this evening's agenda. I don't have any cards for folks in attendance this evening for this item. Do we have any public comments on the dial-in? And just a reminder, press star nine to raise your hand to comment on items not on the agenda at this time.
We have no raised hands.
All right, so we'll move on from oral communications. There are no consent items on this evening's agenda, and so this takes us into the new public hearings portion. So the first public hearing is of file number 2020-003, General Plan Amendment GPA-105-23, Permit for Site Development PSD-849-20, and Tree Permit TP-3-23 to construct a single, new single-family residence, construct a new access road, and tree removal on an undeveloped lot at 501 Santa Cruz Terrace, APNs 022-052-170-180-190 and -250. The recommended CEQA action, Class III Categorical Exemption, CEQA Guidelines, Sections 15303, New Construction or Conversion of Small Structures. The recommended action this evening is continue the public hearing to the regular meeting of the Planning Commission on Tuesday, September 5, 2023. With that, I will open public comment to see if we have any public comment on this agenda item and the recommended action this evening. I don't have any cards, so if you're dialed on the line, please press star nine to raise your hand to speak on this item.
We have no raised hands.
Okay, I will close public comment on this item and bring it back to the commission. Any comments and/or motions on this item? Commissioner Ferguson.
Yeah, I don't have any deliberation on a continuance item, so if nobody has anything, I'd make a motion. I move that we continue it to the regular meeting on September 5, as noted.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Wright.
I'd second.
Okay, let's vote. And that motion passes unanimously. All right. Next item, second public hearing for this evening, file number 2022-026, Use Permit UP-131-22 for construction of a 288 square foot pool, 978 square foot pool deck, retaining wall and other landscaping work on an 86,872 square foot lot with an existing single-family residence located at 1 Hinton Ranch Road, APN-023-160-270. Recommended CEQA action, Class III Categorical Exemption, CEQA Guideline Section 15303. Recommended action is approve with conditions. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Caitlin Snodgrass with the Planning Division, and I'll be presenting item two on tonight's agenda, file number 2022-026. The project site has a general plan designation of low-density residential and a zoning designation of agriculture B5 lot size overlay in hillside preservation districts. The project site is a 1.99 acre parcel with an existing 28 square foot shed, 160 square foot shed, 814 square foot stable, and a 2,361 square foot single-family residence with frontage along Hinton Ranch Road. The existing single-family residence was constructed around the 1950s under the R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District. The city council rezoned the site in 1966 to its current zoning of agriculture B5 lot size overlay. The agriculture district permits residential uses with an approved use permit and a site development permit. However, the subject site hasn't either, making it a non-conforming but lawful use. The proposed project requires Planning Commission approval of a use permit because the applicant proposes to expand the non-conforming single-family residence. The proposed project consists of several components, including the construction of a 288 square foot in-ground pool, a 51 square foot sauna, a 978 square foot pool deck, a 35 square foot extension of the existing site wall, landscaping, and associated improvements. Associated improvements include a pebbled patio, fire pit, concrete retaining wall, pool fence, and walkways to access the existing single-family residence. The project proposes the pool deck raised 12 inches above grade on the existing flat area of the site next to the stable, which is currently serving as the lower gravel driveway. The applicant proposes natural finishes for the concrete deck, patio, and pathways to complement the surrounding environment. These finishes include a cobblestone, crushed granite, timber stairs, and water within the pool landscape, as well as a five-foot-tall silvered wood fence to enclose the area. The project also proposes an expansion of 600 square feet to the existing lower gravel driveway and the construction of a 933 square foot gravel driveway to connect the improvements in existing stable to the main access road, providing further accessibility to the site. The proposed improvements fall under the required allowable 36% coverage as per the Hillside Preservation Zoning District. The proposed maximum coverage of 16% or 14,361 square feet includes all proposed structures and site disturbances, as well as the areas that are existing and are proposed to be demolished. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission finds the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to CEQA Guidelines Section 15, 303, Class 3, approves use permit UP-131-22 by adopting the attached resolution, including all conditions of approval in Exhibit A, and incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff from the commission? Commissioner Wright.
One quick question. I noticed that there was a bunch of uplighting, and I also noticed that there is some issue about spreading too much light around the neighborhood. On past projects, we've usually had some kind of a hood over lights to stop light pollution. How did you reconcile those differences?
I believe we added a condition of approval to the resolution for a lighting plan in which we'll look for approved lighting fixtures that do not correspond with the uplight planters.
That's correct. Good evening, Commission Planning Director Christian Murdock. Condition number seven in the draft resolution, it's on packet page 47, requires the final lighting plan that Assistant Planner Snodgrass mentioned. And so it's our intention within the parameters outlined in that condition to work with the applicant if this project's approved, to revise the lighting or to incorporate shielding in order to avoid glare onto adjacent properties.
Thank you. Is the applicant here, and are they going to be speaking?
Yes, they are here in attendance.
And when is the appropriate time to ask the applicant? Any questions?
That would be when Chair Leal opens the public hearing and invites the applicant to present.
Any more questions from the commission? Okay. So now we'll open the public hearing, and we'll start with the applicant presentation, which they're provided 10 minutes maximum, and you may reserve up to three minutes of your presentation after public comment.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Anon Sheth. I'm an architect licensed in California and the designer of the proposed project here at 1 Hinton Ranch. Happy to answer any questions, but I think there's been such a thorough recap of our project here, the pool scope outside of the stable.
Do you have a presentation? Okay.
No, yeah.
Okay. Would now be appropriate time for questions? Or, yeah, okay. All right, does anyone on the commission have questions for the applicant? Commissioner Godwin.
Yeah, I noticed that the pool deck was quite substantial for this project. Kind of the rule of thumb is 20 or 25 square feet per person, so this would imply that, you know, you're building a deck for, say, parties of 50 or so. Could you elaborate on why you chose to build such a large pool deck?
Sure. Is it possible to pull up the diagram from the presentation? We have an existing site retaining wall, so we're building up to that, and we are allocating some space outside of the stable for seated outdoor dining. And on the other side of the pool, we're allocating space for sort of daybed or lawn chair seating. So it's mostly for furniture that we've extended the footprint of the pool deck, as well as the site condition of that retaining wall that exists. So yeah, recap, between the pool and the stable is where there will be outdoor dining space, and between the pool and the plant south retaining wall is where there will be lounge furniture.
Any more questions, Commissioner Godwin?
No.
That was my only.
Okay. Commissioner Wright.
Just a couple of quick questions. I assume you're capturing all the water from that concrete area. We have had a number of problems lately with slides resulting from not capturing water. I'm sure, being the professional you are, you've considered that. I'd also like to hear from you if you've considered doing solar warming of the water that's going in your pool, if you've considered putting solar panels up to serve your electrical needs to run your pumps and things like that. In other words, are you going to cover the pool to stop evaporation? What kind of environmental considerations did you put into the planning of your project?
Yeah, great. So we do have drainage within the pool deck, site drainage, that's part of our civil drawings that I think should be in the set. We have advocated for sufficient drainage around the pool so that we're not putting unnecessary pressure on the new deck that we're adding. We will have a pool cover. The sliver of pool deck that is planned west of the pool is allocating the automatic pool cover zone that we've set aside. And solar is a future development project for the property where, in the future, we'll be proposing a carport, and on that, we would be adding solar. And we're in the midst of engaging our solar consultant now for all of those calculations. We're also working with PG&E to move the pool, so the electrical capacity will be upgraded for our site as well. So we're kind of doing both things in this phased project.
I also wanted to note that I appreciate that you're using a porous driveway to put the water into the ground, and I wanted to say thank you.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Yeah, you're welcome. Yeah, it's a big driveway, so it was the right move.
Do we have any more questions for the applicant from the commissioners? Okay, all right, I don't see any. So with that, we will open a public comment, and so if members of the public have any comments on this item in the building, please fill out a speaker card in the back. And then if you're on Zoom, please press star nine to raise your hand to speak on this agenda item. I don't have any cards in the room. Do we have anyone dialed in who would like to speak?
We do not have any raised hands.
Okay. With that, we'll close public comment for this item and bring it back to the Planning Commission for deliberation. Commissioner Ferguson.
All right, a question for staff. Per my understanding, they would have required this use permit for any addition to this house because the house itself is now non-conforming due to rezoning it after construction. So it's not specific to the pool or any activities they're doing. Any construction whatsoever would require this permit?
That's correct. The analysis we performed is any expansion of residential use, either horizontally or vertically, to a place on the site where it is not existing currently, would trigger that requirement, given the nonconformity. Correct.
Got it.
Vice Chair Leal, we do have somebody on Zoom that raised their hand after you closed the public hearing.
Okay. With that, then I will reopen the public hearing, and we'll give that speaker an opportunity to make their comment.
And I'm sorry, they just logged off the Zoom.
All right, I will then reclose the public comment and bring it back to the Planning Commission. Does any of the planning commissioners have any, like to raise your hand for any deliberation? Does anyone have a motion? Our Commissioner Ferguson.
Yeah, I'd be inclined to make a motion if we could put the screen back to the motion.
I'm sorry, place the screen where?
To the motion language. Apologies, I forgot to bring my packet. I move that the Planning Commission finds the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to CEQA Guideline Section 15303, Class 3, and approves the use permit UP-131-22 by adopting the attached resolution, including conditions of approval in Exhibit A, and incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Commissioner Wright.
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can everyone vote, please? And that motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you. Anyone who agree by the action of the Planning Commission has 10 calendar days to appeal the decision in writing to the city council. If any of the above actions are challenged in court, issues which may be raised are limited to those raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Judicial review of any of the administrative decisions may be had only if a petition is filed with the court, not later than the 90th day following the date upon which the decision becomes final. Judicial review of environmental determinations may be subject to a shorter time period for litigation, in certain cases, 30 days following the date of final decision. So now we will move on to the communications portion of the agenda. So we'll start with commission communications. Does anyone have any communications they'd like to share? Not seeing any, I'll move on to staff communications.
Thank you, Chair. One announcement from me tonight. The Planning Department recently released a notice of preparation, or NOP, for the preparation of an environmental impact report, or EIR, related to the city's anticipated requirement to rezone and make general plan amendments to accommodate approximately 1,600 new housing units as part of the housing element update process. The notice of preparation is available on the Planning Department's environmental documents page, and anybody interested about the housing element update process can go to planpacifica.org. We're currently in a 30-day We're currently in a 30-day public comment and agency comment period on the scope of the environmental impact report and potential environmental impacts. And so this is the opportunity for agencies and members of the public to provide written input to the city in relation to potential environmental impacts they think the environmental impact report should evaluate. Additionally, there will be a verbal comment input opportunity for the public at a scoping meeting scheduled for Tuesday, August 1, at 6:00 p.m. That will be held via Zoom, in other words, an online meeting. And so the link to that, again, is included in the notice of preparation that is available on the city's, the Planning Department's environmental documents page. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So now we'll move on to adjournment. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Ferguson.
I move to adjourn.
Commissioner Godwin.
I second.
Please vote.
That motion passes unanimously.
All right, thanks, everyone. Have a good evening.